Okay, we will call to order the first public hearing scheduled for 5:30. For the purpose of receiving public input regarding proposed amendments to codes of ordinances, statute 31, period 003, governing the Environmental Commission as submitted by Paul K. Pernaruski, Jr., Mayor of the City of Waterbury. If you wish to address this board on this topic only, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway, state your name and address for the record. You have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 27 Blake Street, Melvin Van.
Good afternoon, everyone. Melvin Van, 27 Blake Street. I am the chairman of the Waterbury Environmental Patrol Commission, and I'm here with some of my fellow commissioners in regards to these amendment proposal for the W E C C, in regards to items 6, 7, 11, and 14. So, I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to repeat everything again?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. My name is Melvin Van, 27 Blake Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. I am the chairman of the Waterbury Environmental Patrol Commission, and I'm here with some of my other commissioners in regards to the proposed amendments for items 6, 7, 11, and 14. So, in regards to these proposals by the mayor's office, we have sent an official response to him a few weeks ago. So, we're standing here because of these changes which will dramatically change how the commission is running. In terms of 6 and 7, in terms of how we can utilize relationships with other institutions or corporations, in terms of some of the work that we do in outreach to the community, in terms of some of the symposiums, meetings, and proposed things that we do in the community. For example, item 6 and 7 would prohibit us from working with partnerships in terms of law symposiums that we do for environmental wise with Post University Yukon and the Environment Committee up in Hartford. We have done for years the annual symposiums in which we talk about environmental topics and we inform the public. The last one we had, pre-COVID, had over 250 people turn out. We had such a wonderful event. We had representatives from the state Capitol come down. We had people from C T Deep Network present, and we had the community engagement on topics that greatly affect Waterbury. And if this goes into effect, we will no longer have the ability to work with partnerships on the state and local, and sometimes even the EPA federal level. In particular, item 14, which also would prohibit us the ability to work with volunteers on the commission. Currently, three of the seven commissioners started off as volunteers with the commission. I myself, I started off with the commission in 2015 as an undergrad in legal studies at Post University, where I want to see how local government ran from first-time experience. I got involved with the commission, been involved with the commission for 10 years. Eventually, afforded the opportunity to serve on the commission for a few years, and then eventually elected as chairperson of that commission. So, I think removing the ability for us to utilize volunteers in terms of some of the work we do, a lot of research and development, also work in terms of just getting their input and involvement and inclusivity with the public in terms of how the commission runs, and to remove that ability, to me, would be damning. As of right now, we are currently, item 11 in particular denies us the right to work with other municipalities and other entities in terms of governmental entities. Right now, we are in communications with the Nogga Valley Conservation Commission in terms to questions and concerns we've gotten in regards to the Amazon site between Waterbury and Nogga Tuck. We're working with Melissa Leonard, who is the chairwoman of that commission in Nogga Tuck. We're also working with our fellow counterparts in Hartford, because we want to pick for a statewide symposium next year between Waterbury, Bridgeport, New Britain, New Haven, and Bristol. So, we want to do an environmental-wise symposium on a state level, and so that would prohibit us the ability to do that. So, in all essence, we feel that some of these proposed amendments, the removal of items 6, 7, 11, and 14, will really hamper our ability to be effective in the community. And the notice that went out in the paper really drummed up a lot of support.
One minute.
Thank you. Drummed up a lot of support. So far, we have received over 17 emails from people in the public, and I have received as a chairperson over 20 phone calls from people who are concerned, given the current climate that we're in politically. So, I ask that you reconsider the removal of these proposed amendments. Thank you for your time, and I yield back.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 86 Cables Avenue, Ellen Carter.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, I'm Ellen Carter. I'm the commissioner on the Environmental Control Commission, and I'm here today to talk about the amended proposal and confirm that the commissioners believe that the changes to amendments 6, 7, 11, and 14 should not go through and should remain intact. I strongly endorse the benefits that come from the collaborations, volunteerism, and awareness activities that we can effectuate currently on the Environmental Control Commission. We respect the important work the board is doing to update the code of ordinances, but ask that you approach the changes to the Environmental Control Commission with care. On this commission, we learn from experts around the city and from citizens about what their concerns are related to the environment, related to waste control management led, and are able to engage other entities, as my fellow commissioner just shared, in problem-solving and solutions, and bringing those forth to commissioners on the board. Keeping the amendments 6, 7, 11, and 14 intact will allow us to do this creatively and with purpose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 45 Pear Street, Sharon Samaska.
Good evening. Thank you for the ability to speak. I thank this board for being here and listening, and I'm going to ask you to make a serious decision tonight, which is to hold off on the amendments to the
Excuse me, just your name and address.
Oh, did I forget that already?
We know you, but
Oh, dear. Sharon Samaska, 45 Pear Street, and I am a commissioner on W E C C. W E C C is a liaison with residents, other departments, and agencies in and outside the city. Educational programs are only one facet of what we do. There is little benefit to collect data that can't be used when it's needed and gets stored in a closet. Immediate environmental concerns demand timely responses, and I am one of those people who came to learn about W E C C because of that need in a disastrous fire 200 feet from my home. And it was W E C C's chairperson who came out and helped on the day that we were being exposed to an extraordinary level of asbestos, because a company that was hired failed to follow the Clean Air Act, not a first time, but a second time. And I came to volunteer at W E C C and to advocate for W E C C in this city, and now has led me to volunteer nationwide. We need to know, and you need to know, in 2004, W E C C was created to fill a gap in the city. As the environment changes and policies and laws change, so must we. W E C C is the advocating body. We don't have another body like this in this city. To do that, intercommunication, interrelationships, and outreach within our borders and outside our borders is a must. We support Waterbury, and we ask that Waterbury supports us. To that end, I am asking you, as the Board of Aldermen Group, who rules upon this tonight, which I find a very short timeframe to get this straightened out. It's a disservice to the city to accept these amendments in totality as written. There are questions and concerns that need to be addressed first. We can't do the best job for the city unless we have the best ordinance possible, and I don't think that some of these amendments are that. And I also support that we should keep 6, 7, 11, and 14 for the following reasons. E6 is related to number four, number one, and number two, coordinating and assisting and unifying the efforts of private groups, institution, individuals, and city agencies as they relate to the environment. We already have connections to community groups providing information and making referrals. Don't shut down lifesaving actions. Example, Clean Air Act violation that I just explained. Without W E C C, it would have gone unnoticed, and that's bad, because any one of you driving by that site with that smoke coming off the area, you can get asbestos. You can get cancer. So, don't think you're immune, because you're not. We are more not immune in the community, but anything can happen to anyone. Number seven, don't delete it. It is a positive reinforcement for number one. Example, Crown Brook works with agencies planting trees and has come in and is providing free trees to people in Waterbury in Crown Brook to make this a better environment and better place. We need to keep doing that. We need to spread that. We need to start gardens. Kevin Zach works on cleaning up the Nogga Tuck River. Let's not stop him. Let's let us all support him. E11, some boards and commissions have volunteers. This is vital. It builds a connection with Waterbury, with city governments, and enhances college students' education. It enhanced mine. I came here when I was a paralegal working in the area of environmental law, and I never thought I was going into it, and yet here I am. We work with Nogga Tuck. The City of Waterbury partners with them. We work with other groups. We need to keep doing that, and we are in an environment where if our W E C C is active and strong, we're an example to the colleges that there is a way to save our world. E14 should not be deleted. W E C C has contact with deep Nogga Tuck Conservation Commission, EPA, and other beneficial groups. We cannot do our job without that. And in face of changing laws in this country
One minute.
... dangers to our water system, yesterday I learned that something like only 30% of water in the United States is able to be used to drink. That is horrible. And what about our Nogga Tuck River and the sewage treatment plant? Connecticut is staying firm at trying to keep special policies intact. We need to do that too for our residents. It saves lives. It saves the lives of our children. Another example, as Melvin had mentioned, is Amazon. It's a site where Nogga Tuck and Waterbury are working together. The environmental problems, we need to work together upon, because it affects both of us. I would also add that at the bottom of the amendments, the date of the original creation of W E C C has been crossed off. I don't believe that's a good idea. I don't think that that's what has to happen. Because these are amendments, that date needs to stay, because we're only amending this. We are not throwing it away.
That's time.
Let's not throw us away. Rally behind us, and let us have a meeting with the mayor, the corporate council, and W E C C together to make this work for our entire city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker for that public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Before we close the public hearing, there will be no vote on this tonight, and the mayor looks forward to meeting with you in the future. So, there will be no vote on unfinished business, number four. With that, we will close this public hearing, and we'll call to order the public hearing scheduled for 5:37 PM. For the purpose of receiving public input regarding the repeal of ordinances governing dormant boards and commissions and amendments to related ordinances as submitted by Paul K. Pernaruski, Jr., Mayor of the City of Waterbury. If you wish to address this board on this topic only, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 45 Pear Street, Sharon Samaska.
Sharon Samaska, 45 Pear Street. I have just one question on this. I have been researching and trying to find out what boards, what commissions, what committees are being terminated. I think before you rule on that, you need to know, we need to know. I understand it's and the Board of Aldermen, and I believe the mayor, all have rights to create a committee, a commission, a board of whatever we want to give it a term for, for a specific project to be completed, possibly in a specific time. But what are they? And how can we, going forward, not have to come up with something like this that says that we have several boards, several commissions, ordinances along with them that we want to terminate? I would suggest, before we do that, let's make sure we're terminating the right thing. Maybe they need to go somewhere else. Maybe they should be diverted to a board or a commission that's already in existence. What was their purpose? Do we still need that purpose, or is it being addressed somewhere else? But most of all, who are they? And I can only think of one, which years ago was a dog board or a dog commission, and it was created for a specific reason, and it has not been in use for several years, although there are times when I think it probably still should be in use. So, those are my questions, and I would hope that they could be addressed to our satisfaction or posted somewhere, because I see absolutely nothing anywhere about stale boards and commissions or groups in the City of Waterbury. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing scheduled for 5:37, and we will open the public hearing scheduled for 5:44 PM. For the purpose of receiving public input regarding appropriation and bond authorization for rehabilitation, renovation, and fit-out of the One Exchange Building in the amount of $6 million as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. If you wish to address the board on this topic only, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker from 83 Bank Street, Stephen Del Vecchio.
Stephen Del Vecchio from 83 Bank Street, the Waterbury Chamber. You'll have to excuse me tonight. I have some allergies I'm dealing with. President D.G. Von Carlo, members of the Board of Aldermen, as the Government Affairs and Economic Development Director for the Waterbury Regional Chamber, I stand before you to communicate that the Chamber strongly supports the City of Waterbury's request for a $6 million appropriation and bond authorization to rehabilitate and restore One Exchange Place, an iconic building at the heart of our central business district. One Exchange Place is more than just a structure. It is a landmark strategically located at the crossroads of Waterbury's downtown. It once comprised 72,000 square feet of prime Class A office space. For years, this property sat underutilized, its potential obstructed by serious, excuse me, by serious deferred maintenance issues and an unattainable condominium ownership structure that fractured responsibility and stymied investment. As commercial real estate broker Dom Giglio of Giglio Commercial Real Estate, who has represented the building's previous ownership, said, "For over a decade, I showcased One Exchange to developers, but each walked away. The cost of tackling years of neglect made the numbers unworkable, and the fractured condo ownership model only added to the risk. Without state and city intervention, this building would have continued to languish indefinitely." The city's acquisition of the property, bolstered by State of Connecticut funding, has finally made it feasible to return the signature building to the grand list. This investment is not speculative. The city has already secured tenants for multiple floors and plans to utilize portions of the building as swing space during the renovation of the Chase Municipal Building, saving taxpayers an estimated $400,000 annually in avoided rental costs. Once fully rehabilitated, the city, once fully rehabilitated and the city employees are relocated back to the Chase Building, One Exchange Place is projected to be sold and generate more than $185,000 annually in real estate taxes, excuse me, not including additional revenue from personal property taxes. This revitalization will provide much-needed quality office space downtown, catalyze further investment in surrounding properties, and support Waterbury's ongoing downtown Phase III redevelopment. We understand the concerns. That concerns have been raised, that the city should not be in the real estate business, and that developers, developers could have purchased the building as is. However, the Chamber respectfully disagrees based on a decade of market realty. No serious developer pursued the property due to the prohibitive cost associated with its condition. Without the city stepping in, the building would remain dormant, continuing to be a drag on the tax base and missed opportunity for revitalization. Critics also argue that with the combined investment from the state and city, the city may not recoup the full amount upon eventual resale. But this view fails to account for the substantial public value created, tax revenue, cost savings, economic activity, job creation, and the elimination of a long-term liability in the city center. These benefits cannot be measured by resale value alone. They are direct investment in Waterbury's economic health and visual landscape. The Waterbury Regional Chamber stands firmly in favor of this investment. It is fiscally and strategically sound step toward restoring a signature downtown asset and fostering
One minute.
Continued momentum in Waterbury's resurgence. We urge you to vote in favor of the bond authorization and help bring One Exchange Place back to full and productive use. Further, we encourage you to approve the sale agreement to sell 2430 Bank Street to M4 Investment Group for $585,000. Thank you for your leadership and vision. Thank you.
Next speaker from 83 Bank Street, Dan Page.
Good evening, Dan Page, 83 Bank Street. I'm the Director of Main Street Waterbury. Our mission is to assist with downtown Waterbury's revitalization and economic growth. Vacant and underutilized buildings like One Exchange Place, which is set in that condition for a few years now, stand in the way of achieving our shared goal of a more vibrant downtown. Investing in the building's fit-out now will enable the city to avoid higher costs in the future, guarantees that the property will return to Class A office space, becoming a key source of activity in and around the green once again. It signals that Waterbury is ready to support strategic development, building on similar investments in other downtown buildings, and ongoing infrastructure improvements. I encourage the Board of Aldermen to approve this bonding request, support redevelopment of one of downtown's largest properties. Thank you.
Next speaker from 5 Newton Terrace, Dawn L. Mariano.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Mariano, and I reside at 5 Newton Terrace. At the October 23rd, 2023 Board of Aldermen meeting, then Merrill Larry stood at this very podium. very podium and told you and the city's residents and taxpayers that the greatest economic redevelopment move for the city was to buy One Exchange Place property. As he so excitedly exclaimed, "This is our opportunity," quote-unquote, "to fill this building located in the heart of the downtown revitalization area with quality tenants and be guaranteed revenue from day one." That didn't happen. He spoke of ghost tenants that he had lined up but was not at liberty to disclose who they were. He claimed that he would present the big plan three weeks after that meeting, which coincidentally took us to right after the election, which would make it too late to backpedal on the purchase of that, which got the majority vote of yes from you. He stood up here and claimed neither I nor residents asked any questions, and that true leaders would ask questions. Guess what? We all asked questions and got no answers. We are all still asking questions, and we all deserve real answers. More importantly, both O'Leary and Mayor Paul have assured the taxpayers that none of this would ever impact them by way of costing them any money. Now, clearly, this deal had been in the works for a while because grants like this don't happen overnight. And more importantly, the owners of One Exchange Place owed over $811,000 in back taxes. Now, we all know people who have fallen on hard times. They've lost their homes. And here's what happens. The city takes the property, they auction it off without laying any money out, and they keep the revenue. How did the city allow these owners to accumulate a tax debt of over three-quarters of a million dollars, all while the owners let the property deteriorate into a deplorable mess? Hmm, sounds a little like Waterbury Hospital, doesn't it? So how many more cases like this are out there? But in this case, it doesn't matter because the city swooped in, paid them $4.5 million for the building, and the owners in turn took $800,000 of that $4.5 million and gave it back to the city to pay their back taxes. Does anyone else see anything sketchy about this? P.S. They made a profit on top of everything. The other $2.5 million in grant money has gone to improvements, and trust me, I've toured that building, that is a drop in the bucket. And that brings us to tonight. You're going back on your promise to not burden the taxpayers with any of the financial responsibilities for the necessary improvements, and you are asking us to cover a $6 million bond for further improvements to a building that will need far more than that. But let's do the math. The building was appraised at $6 million. We have dumped $7 million into it already, who cares where it came from? And now you want us to borrow another $6 million, that's $13 million, on a building appraised at $6 million? And as all business owners know, the cost of running a building is very expensive and never-ending. So what will be the monthly cost to the taxpayers for the maintenance of this building? Oh, and by the way, you currently have one month-to-month tenant? So in true manipulative form, the administration is touting all of this money that the city will save by acquiring the building, using it for swing space, relocating probate court, and now some quasi-city regional entity is taking space on the sixth floor at a ridiculously low rent, locked in for 10 years with options of more. Who negotiated that? Let me guess, the same person who negotiated the city's worst real estate deal, the Amazon Land deal? But that's another story for another time. Municipalities are not supposed to be landlords. From a business perspective, none of this makes sense. None of it. The purchase does not make sense.
One minute.
Taking on additional bonds do not make sense. I am asking you all, the Aldermen, to think long and hard about this commitment before you vote your usual automatic yes. Think long and hard about your responsibility to your district's taxpayers. Think long and hard about your job, which let me remind you, is to be the checks and balances for the residents, not a rubber stamp for the administration. And finally, think long and hard about having to answer for your vote on this bond come November. Think long and hard about it. You will have to answer for it. Thank you.
Next speaker from 105 Norris Street, Dominic Davino.
How we doing? Dominic Davino Jr. from 105 Norris Street, Waterbury, obviously Connecticut. I ask the board to calmly look at all this, One Exchange Place, and not rush to yay-yay-yays, to have more conversation on it. I think by the time all is done, it's going to exceed over $20 million. What about the people that walk around there? What about those people? Are they Waterbury citizens? Maybe just knock the building down and do something for those people. Let them have more area to walk. Instead of thinking about the money-hungry people that want to find a way to find loopholes, to rent space, to make money, to do this, to do that, can't we just think about the people in the city that walk around there? There's a lot of stuff we can do in this city, but for this particular thing, I ask you not to rush to vote, talk about it more, and think about the people that don't even know what the heck is going on in that facility. And renting it and doing all the stuff these gentlemen says is a crock of baloney. And I agree with Dawn and everything she says to Exchange Place. I really just wish you would just take your time, think about it. Stop wasting our taxpayers' dollars. I was late for my mortgage one month and already Scott sent a lien letter. One month! These people can go and owe $900,000? That's crazy. My family was scared when we got that. Times were rough, but you know, the rich people get scot-free and they make $100,000 off of it. Republicans, you're supposed to be with your chairwoman. You should be voting for your chairwoman on this particular subject. My name's Dominic Davino, and I thank you for listening to me today. God bless you all.
That's the last speaker tonight, Mr. President.
Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing set for 5:44, and we will call to order the public hearing set for 5:51 PM for the purpose of receiving public input regarding an amendment and restatement to capital, to 2021 capital appropriation and bond authorization for rehabilitation and renovations in various fire stations and fire station replacement preparation costs in the amount of $6,700,000 as submitted by Michael Le Blanc, Director of Finance. If you wish to address this board on this topic only, I ask that you sign up with our city sheriff, Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 35 Gorman Circle, Christopher Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Christopher Casey, 35 Gorman Circle. And as in the interest of full disclosure, I am a member of the Board of Fire Commissioners, and I am a retired member of the International Association of Firefighters. Good evening, Mr. President and Honorable Board Members. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege because I have the opportunity to do so, and publicly thank Chief Terrence Ballou for his many years of dedicated service to this city, and wish him the best in his retirement. Slightly more than a week ago, many of us attended a memorial event outside here and had the opportunity to pay tribute to our fallen firefighters and police officers, and was gratifying to see so many of you here that day. I truly appreciate your presence. Thirty-five years ago, on May 10th, I was a young paramedic on duty here in the city of Waterbury. And I worked as part of a team to diligently and frantically save the lives of those firefighters that were killed in that crash on West Main Street. I spent hours on top of that apparatus, just holding the guy's hand because that was the right thing to do. These men and women at the department are brave people who serve us every day, and they hold a special place in my heart. Earlier this year, I and many of you were able to attend the Station 7 rededication and blessing. We're making progress, we're starting to make progress. Our firefighters risk their lives daily, most of them working fire stations that are over 100 years old. The infrastructure is in dire need of repairs. Our firefighters deserve the best that we can afford to give them. Capital expenditures don't always meet the needs, and if bonding is necessary, then we should pursue it responsibly. I'm sure Mr. Le Blanc and his team have come up with the best possible plan that's presumably affordable and helping us to achieve those goals. I ask you tonight to please support unfinished business number four and make our fire department stronger and better. Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing scheduled for 5:51, and we will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, May 19th, 2025. If everybody will please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a silent prayer. And I ask that you keep in the prayers tonight the family of Mike McKenna. He's a former police officer in Waterbury, retired, who passed away way too young. So thank you.
(Crosstalk).
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderman Nujean.
Present.
Alderman Rinaldi. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Talladine.
Present.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman D G. Van Carlo.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda would be public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our city sheriff, Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 45 Pear Street, Sharon L. Samaska.
Good evening again, Sharon Samaska, 45 Pear Street. I have several concerns. First of all, thank you for being here and thank you for listening to us, and thank you for supporting W E C C. I have one question that I saw in the paper. Amazon is planning to build a huge facility in Enfield. What does that mean for Waterbury? Are they serious about us? Are they going to have a conflict between who's better and who's worse? Are they going to say one's easier and drop the other? I don't know, but I have concerns. And I would hope that if they do leave, that they don't leave a disastrous situation up there, especially with five and 10 inches of rain happening, it seems like, at least once a month. Next concern, Hamilton Avenue, Waterbury Prospect Road. At the junction of East Mountain Road and the small road on the left-hand side, if you're going up toward Prospect, where the Cross of Christ Church and several businesses and an apartment complex are, it's considered Hamilton Avenue. We are looking at some serious problems. There's a development being proposed on the Waterbury Prospect Line. We already have vehicles speeding, unauthorized vehicles using the road. I was at church the other day, working in the garden in the late afternoon. I couldn't even begin to tell you how fast some of those vehicles were going. Tuesday morning, I tried to exit, going toward Waterbury, making a right turn, all right, I'm sorry, right turn to go toward the mall. I had to wait for seven trucks. Seven of them. I mean, we need a light there. We need a light to protect motorists, we need a light to protect pedestrians and to protect the groups that use those areas. There are volunteer groups that go into both churches, and traffic is really getting to be a nightmare. Sometimes I wait 15 minutes to make a turn. And speeding vehicles are a great risk. My suggestion is put the four-way traffic light there. In addition, if a traffic study hasn't been done because of that proposed development, I wonder if one would help. JNS All Stars Auto Body Shop, South Leonard. Twice in the last week, I have been prevented from going straight, and I almost got hit when one of those vehicles was parked the wrong way and they were having a conversation with motorcycle riders at the side of the road. This is always from my point of view when I'm driving there between 4:00 and 7:00. Again, if this man wants this to happen, tell him to make a parking area for these vehicles and not to obstruct traffic. Route 8 North exit to South Leonard. I don't know what to do or how to do it, who to contact. I believe that would be possibly a state situation. They need a stop sign because they are coming off that highway more than 60 miles an hour, and you can barely see them. The brush is growing again, and pretty soon, I'm going to, because I'm short, I try to see the traffic, I cannot see it. Bristol Street, junction of Bristol Avenue. I have called Connecticut Water Company, I have called the city. There is water constantly running, it is more than it was. It's going slow down that hill, and there are at least four caps, and I don't know if they're Connecticut Water Company or what they are. Something has to be done. The water is going in around them, it's bubbling up over them. In the winter, it's freezing, and this has been going on for over two to three years. It's time to come up with an answer because the asphalt is already being taken away there. And things go into that one culvert, which is now covered with leaves, which means-
One minute.
-that culvert's not going very well. So that's that question. Medical and food insecurity. Our ECFs are overfilled. There is one or more, there's 51 some-odd ECFs that are planning on striking next week. What's going to happen? There are no beds in the ECFs now. My relative was discharged from the hospital prematurely because Medicare wouldn't allow the coverage, and there's no nursing home within an hour to an hour and a half of Waterbury. I don't know what we can do but something. Food insecurity. Thirty-four trucks were not seen to deliver their food this past week to the food bank. Every single one of our charitable organizations are hurting. I don't know what our city can do, but I'm asking us to think about something. They're doing a remarkable job feeding at one charitable organization alone over 25,000 meals in a month.
That's time.
We've got to do something, and we just pray and we hope that you guys are the ones who can be the action to start it. Thank you.
Next speaker from 178 Cook Street, Emma Taylor.
Emma Taylor, 178 Cook Street. I also have a few issues today. Back in the day, when cars were driving up and down the street and they had loud tailpipes, our police department would pull them over and they would get a citation or something, or they had to fix them. When I tell you the car, you don't know if it's loud mufflers or if it's gunshots going off. They're constantly there at all hours of the night, and I'm a light sleeper, so they do wake me up. The cars are still passing on Cook Street. I've had one pass me at least once a week, just driving up Cook Street, on top of the streets being tore up from the floor up. They pass that laundromat, I don't know how the zoning board put that zone, that laundromat on the corner of Cook and Hopkins, but it's already becoming a traffic nightmare. If someone is parking on Hopkins Street, they're parking right on the corner of Cook and Hopkins, they're parking on the opposite side. So if someone is coming up Cook Street and they make the right-hand turn, they could potentially be running into a car that's coming up Hopkins Street. It's out of control, and they aren't even open yet. The garbage cans, they're still on the streets after garbage day. They are not moving them. Cars are going the wrong way on Hill Street. They're coming all the way from the top and going all the way from, to the bottom, and I've seen it. We've already had an accident over there, and they are just out of control. They're floating down the street, they're not even driving, they're floating. And Greenwood. They're flying up and down Greenwood Street, too. We've had a couple of fatalities on that street already. So, that's my 4-1-1 for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 57 Cedar Avenue, Gail Mangus.
My name is Gail Mangus, and I live at 57 Cedar Avenue. I bought my home there almost 12 years ago. It's a very quiet neighborhood. Nobody could build behind me. It's basically a senior street. There were no children. My first holiday, my first Halloween, I was so excited, I bought tons of candy, thinking this is a residential neighborhood. Not one kid came to my house. Well, saves me a lot of money, but I'm not here to talk about that. I am talking about what is going on at the top of Cedar Avenue. I was born and raised in this city. My entire family has roots in this city, so deep. My grandfather helped build the wall around Fulton Park. I've been here a long time. My father was a police officer in this city. He always taught us, do what you're supposed to do. Don't go where you're not supposed to go. Follow the rules. There was a nursing home at 128 Cedar Avenue. It closed. It was purchased by the company that owns the Yeltsin. Some work has been done to this building. I don't think enough, but how I came to know that this building is now open and being run as a residential care facility, which that building is not zoned for, is how does nobody in the city know? The reason I found this out was because I'm home all the time, I'm retired, and there was a gentleman walking up and down the street. Now, 57 is in the middle of the street. I know my neighbors from the bottom up to my house. I know some of my neighbors up the top of the street, but this gentleman just didn't look familiar. I just keep an eye out. I have an elderly woman that lives across the street from me. I bring in her trash cans. She's in her 80s. We have children that now live on this street. Moms walk their children down the street to get the bus, or they walk them to Chase School, and they walk them home. One day, I pulled up the street, and I pulled in my driveway, and the gentleman was walking down the street, and he turned around and followed me back to my house and asked me for a cigarette. Simple enough. I told him that I don't smoke, and he insisted that he needed a cigarette. And I said to him, I'm sorry, I don't smoke. I don't have a cigarette for you, but I need one. Then you need to march your tiny hiney down the street and take a right, and there's a gas station with a convenience store, and you can purchase a package of cigarettes. A little while later, I was sitting on my porch, and he walks up the street. So, I get off my porch, walk to the end of my property, and I watch him, and he walks all the way up to this nursing home. This isn't right, something's wrong. Now, when that building closed and they boarded it up, I'm one of those neighbors that watches what goes on in my neighborhood. I would go up and check to make sure that it wasn't broken into. Sometimes the fire alarm would go off, I'd call, make sure, you know, someone would come up and check it out. Well, when I went up that evening, I was out, and I said, you know, let me just go see. The gentleman was pacing back and forth on the porch, smoking a cigarette, and he had stuck a piece of cardboard in the door so that he could get back in. My first instinct was, you need to call the police because this is just not right.
One minute.
So, the long and short of this is, there are people living in this building. It is not zoned for residential care, it is zoned for nursing. Documents have been received by the City of Waterbury stating residential care as of December 9 of 2024. How does nobody in this city know? When I came down to talk, I wound up speaking with Ken Stanko, and he advised me, no, there's nobody, there's no business in there, and I said, yes, there is. He then got on the phone with Alderman DiGio Van Carlo, who happens to live around the corner, and he had no knowledge of this. How is this possible? If I were to open a business in this city and I circumvented permits and zoning, you would give me a cease and desist order immediately. Why is this facility still up and running? I get it, they went to the state first and circumvented the city, but why is nothing being done? And I can't say nothing's being done, it's with corporate counsel. It's a concern for me, it's a concern for other neighbors in this neighborhood. I thank you very much for your time. I really do appreciate it, and I hope that something gets done because it's just not right. And I don't want to be that person that says not in my neighborhood. If they followed the rules and did what was supposed to be done, then I wouldn't have anything to say. My point is, they're not following the rules. When everybody else has to follow them, why don't they? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay. Before we go into official business, we have some items to add on to the agenda. We have three resignations to add on to the agenda. The first is going to be a resignation from the Litter Control and Beautification Commission. It's Michael Moutichero. It's going to be receiving place on file. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item 26 as a receiving place on file?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and item 26 is added to the agenda. Item 27 is a resignation of Alderman Michael Salvio from the Litter and Beautification Commission. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 27 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and item 27 is added, will be receiving place on file. And finally, is resignation from Maybeth Morales Davis from the Arts and Tourism Commission. It would be receiving place on file. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 28 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and item 27 is added, will be receiving place on file. And finally, is resignation from Maybeth Morales Davis from the Arts and Tourism Commission. It would be receiving place on file. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 28 to the agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adding item 28 to the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and item 28 is added. On your desk, item number nine had a misprint, a typical error in the packet, rather than explain it. I just had him get you guys another page. It was a description of James Nardozzi. That was a little confused with his past, so it'll be corrected if anybody wants to ask him a question on it, but all it is, is it was a cut-and-paste error that had Mr. Nardozzi being a former member of the D E C D, which he was not. So, the new pages is here. Nothing changes in the contract, just his description. So, with that, we will take up unfinished business items first. So, with that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to reserve ourselves in the committee at the whole?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolving ourselves in the committee at the whole signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Unfinished business. Item number four is a request approval for an amendment and the restatement to 2021 capital appropriation and bond authorization for rehabilitation and renovations in various fire stations and fire station replacement preparation costs in the amount of $6,700,000. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Martinez.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and unfinished business is approved. Unfinished business item number four is approved. Item, unfinished business item number five is a request of approval of appropriations and bond authorization for rehabilitation, renovation, and fit-out of the One Exchange Building in the amount of $6 million. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thanks for recognizing me. Is anyone here that can answer whether we have a full cost analysis of what it's going to take to get this building ready for, I guess, sale? I would assume it's ready for sale when we're moving our people in from the Education Department, et cetera. It's a swing space, but I don't know, I mean, maybe it's my memory, but when we took a tour of that building, I did not remember any leaks in roofs and different things that we had to fix. I thought it was almost kind of like a move-in situation, and it's not, so do we have like an overall price?
Good evening. Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. We do have a price in combination of the requested $6 million plus the $2.5 million from the state of Connecticut that's available from the grant. The total estimated cost for the abatement issues, the renovation work, the fit-out is projected at $8.5 million.
So, then that's it after this? You won't have, we won't have to put any money into it to sell it afterwards? Is that correct?
That's correct. The condition assessments that have been performed have identified the areas that need to be addressed. There is one section of the roof, the patio section of the roof, that is significantly compromised. It did, there has been a significant amount of rain infiltration into the building in certain areas, and as part of the work that's being done or proposed to be done, there's an abatement component for some of the mold, but the repairs of the roof will, at the end of the day, ensure that there won't be any additional rain infiltration into the building going forward.
And then if we sell the building and we move the department, Nagatuck, what is it, Chamber, Council of Governments and other different organizations in there, what happens then?
When we sell the building?
Right.
Those leases would be incorporated into the purchase and sale agreement, and they would carry over into the prospective new ownership upon the sale of the building.
Okay. When we approved the bond for the $30 million for the Chase Building, was, there were no swing spaces or any sort of plan into that estimate?
They're incorporated in the 30 million estimate, there certainly would have been a component to deal with the swing space costs. What this allows is the opportunity to not have to incur those swing space costs by having the employees during the renovation period located within One Exchange.
Do we know what that money was that we set aside for that?
I don't have the specific amount. The overall estimate for the overall project was, you know, estimated at the $30 million, incorporating all of the costs, including the design engineering, as well as the rehabilitation The issue there is, those were estimates that were put together before, you know, going forward with the full design. That is happening as we speak, and as that project analysis unfolds in the months ahead, there'll be a determination as far as what ultimately the full scope of work is going to entail for that building.
I'm just trying to find somewhere else to get this money instead of taking out a bond, so thank you for explaining that. And just a comment, with all due respect to our public speaker, we do, we might be like-minded as a political party, but as far as like Alderman, we do represent our district. We don't just back what our chairwoman says or the mayor says, so when we do vote today, it will be based on our representation of our district as Alderman. Thank you.
Alderman Jane.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President. If this was, if this was not to go through, what would be the potential backup plan for what Alderwoman Zimmerman was talking about with the swing space? Did we have a backup plan in that? Would we house the Chase Building employees and those departments?
Not at this time. Going back, you know, be it 20 years ago when this building was rehabbed, there was other space in downtown that was leased for the period of time that these employees within this building at the time, you know, for their period where they were relocated. That is where we identified the estimated cost. We were able to identify the lease that was in place back in the early 2000s or mid 2000s, and the lease cost for that space was $400,000 a year at the time.
It was $400,000 a year for that sovereign bank building? How many floors did we, do you remember how many floors we operated out of the sovereign bank building when we did this, city hall over?
I don't recollect. Several floors, if not all of them, but definitely several, but I don't know specifically.
It was a two-year plan at the time?
I don't know.
And this is, the Chase Building is also projected to be a 24-month plan?
We're projecting two, potentially into a third year.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Elsa.
Thank you. Could you tell me what the average square foot rent is for downtown Waterbury?
We believe it's in the area of where our lease has been set, actually, with NVCOG at $12 a square foot, triple net.
Is that what we based our rent on?
Yes.
And what the entity going in will be paying?
That's correct.
Okay. And how long before they get to go into there?
We're projecting the end of this calendar year, so in the November-December timeframe for the tenants that would be paying, they are, they're the priority. We're anticipating for the Chase Building with, as the process unfolds for completing the design engineering and then putting that project out to bid, we're projecting that it'll be the early part of 2026, be it the January-to-March timeframe, when those employees would be relocated out of the Chase Building.
Okay. The renter that's there now and the proposed renter coming in, they'll be paying, they'll be paying rent by the end of this year, both?
That's correct.
And the one that's there now, are they paying the $12 a square foot?
Yes, they are. The one tenant is, again, as was mentioned earlier this evening, they are on a month-to-month base. They opted to take a wait-and-see approach in regards to what was going to be done with the building before committing to a longer-term lease for that tenant.
Renovations there, are they going to interfere with that operation, the ones that are there now and the ones you're bringing in? Are we going to be able to have rent paid and simultaneously renovate the building?
Yes. The current occupant tenant on the third floor, their space will remain as is. Their, what they were hoping to see is some of the benefits in regards to the renovation work that's being proposed, particularly the rain infiltration, the tiles, ceiling tiles on that third floor. Those are being replaced with tiles that, clean tiles, if you will, that have been removed from other floors. There's an excess stock that's available. During our most recent rainstorm, some of the tiles on the third floor were damaged, and we immediately replaced those out. So... Um, so again, I, I believe that tenant is, um, reacting kindly to, uh, what is being done at this point in time, and if this authorization is approved, we'll move forward with, uh, the remaining renovation work, uh, for One Exchange and, um, with our expectations that, uh, we would be able to secure this tenant into a longer-term lease.
Okay. From what I read, the, the whole proposal is a lost situation for the city and the citizens of Waterbury. We're not going to make back our money. We're just going to make some of it back.
In regards to the $6 million, um, between the rental income and the, the savings on the swing space, uh, will be more than covering the debt service, uh, on the $6 million bond if we ultimately issued the full $6 million in. Um, as was mentioned in the, the submission, um, with the sale of 2430 Bank Street, um, we will be bringing back to this board and ask that the $585,000 of sale proceeds be allocated to the One Exchange renovation project, so that, uh, will have, uh, will ultimately reduce the amount of bonds that are actually issued to finance the renovation work. Um, and then when the time comes when the building is sold, uh, the proceeds from that sale, there'll be three items for consideration as far as how to handle those proceeds, as, uh, the mayor had mentioned, uh, when he was before you at your last meeting. Uh, we could early redeem the bonds that ultimately would have been issued by that point. We could take the bond proceeds and put it into the city's unallocated funds and use those proceeds in lieu of issuing bonds for other projects at the time. Or we could, uh, deposit the proceeds into the city's debt service fund and, uh, use it for, uh, debt service on, uh, the, uh, bond issuance that are in play, uh, when that time comes. Again, we're looking at, um, two to three years out, um, you know, before we'll be in a position for that building to go up for sale. Um, we would want to ensure that our, the employees have been able to come back to the Chase building, so we're not in a position where we'd have to be leasing space out from, uh, the new owner of the building.
Okay. And so you're anticipating three years before the bonds can be retired? Possible?
Two to three years.
Isn't that, okay. Do you know what that's going to cost us in interest yet? Approximately?
Um, I don't. I, you know, it, it's, you know, it depends on the timing of which, when you go to market, what's happening with the, the treasury yields at that point in time. Um, you know, uh, from an estimated standpoint, you know, I did project out, you know, what we would be looking at, uh, as estimated debt service during those, uh, early years, and, uh, again, the rental income and the avoided costs of, uh, leasing space for the swing space more than covers, uh, the projected annual debt service, uh, on those bonds. And, um, what's in play is, you know, the, the timing of the issuance of the bonds as well. We do have cash reserves that allows us to, um, effectively decide when the timing is best for the city to issue bonds. Uh, we have not issued, or the last time the city issued bonds was in May-June of 2022 timeframe. Um, so it's been, you know, three fiscal years now where we've continued to be paying down debt service. Um, I do anticipate that sometime over the next six to 12-month period, we'll be looking at, um, going to market. Um, but, uh, again, we have flexibility to, you know, time the market so that we can, you know, achieve, you know, the best interest rate possible at the time that we decide to go to market.
How are we going to start the work if we haven't got the bonds issued already?
So, approval of the bond authorization, uh, provides the, the appropriation component that would allow us to move forward and issue contracts for the work. Um, what we would be doing as far as financing the work would be, uh, temporarily utilizing available cash reserves, uh, for those costs, in which time those reserves would be replenished when the bonds are sold.
All right. So the total, can, can you give me a total investment? I didn't do it all in my head yet, and what, what we're going to have invested in this potentially by the time we get ready to sell it?
So the, the city's investment, uh, would be the $6 million. Uh, again, there would be a $585,000 credit off that with the sale proceeds of, uh, selling 2430 Bank Street. Um, so that's the net investment that the city would be making. Um, but the overall investment encompasses, uh, the $7 million, uh, grant that the state of Connecticut provided, of which four and a half million of that was used for the acquisition of both of those properties, with the balance of the 2.5 million, uh, currently programmed into, uh, the renovation work over at One Exchange.
So it'll be 13 million invested, approximately? Plus interest?
As far as the renovation work, it's, uh, uh, the combined total is the eight and a half million dollars for the renovation work.
But with the price of the building and everything else? Cause you just said $6 million minus 585, and then some, $7 million from the state, which I paid state taxes too, so I'm a little concerned about that. So that's a $13 million investment into a building, and we're looking at selling it for $6 million already, so.
So, the 13 million less the 585,000, as far as, um, you know, the, the estimate, uh, that we've provided, uh, as far as the potential, uh, sale proceeds of One Exchange when the time comes is 6.3 million. That contemplated, uh, the renovation work unfolding, um, and, uh, you know, again, ultimately money going back into the property. Um, so, or, you know, we would expect that it would be at least that amount when the time comes.
Okay. Um, and it's anticipated, you said that you're going to pay down the debt as fast as possible or recycle that money into another situation? How long are you taking these bonds out?
Generally, we put bonds out for 20 years, a 20-year amortization period.
That's a long time to pay for that building. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Moseley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, for recognizing me. Um, good evening. I'm Mr. LeBlanc. Can you speak a little bit to the, uh, potential negative impacts if this bond authorization is not passed, particularly to this project, but also to our, the city's central business district development plan?
So, one negative impact is, you know, we, we would have to cover the swing space costs differently. Uh, we would have to go and seek and find space for the relocation of the Chase building employees. Um, and the other impact is, we would not be able to move forward with, uh, completing the renovation and fit out of the One Exchange building. Uh, it would also bring it to question, um, whether or not we would be able to, uh, uh, move forward with leasing the space out to NVCOG. Um, and, um, it would put in jeopardy the possibility of securing, uh, the third-floor tenant under a long-term lease.
So if, if these renovations do not occur, we're in jeopardy of not getting any potential, um, individuals or organizations to lease in, in that property? And it could remain vacant? Or large portions of it can remain vacant for an extended period of time?
Yeah, ultimately, if the renovation work is not completed, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Jane?
Thank you again. Quick question. Obviously with this type of lease, if it was to pass and go through, it, it won't be a, you know, a land lease or anything like that. It would be a normal square foot lease for these tenants? It won't be like a percentage lease or, uh, you know, a net, a triple-net lease?
It'll be a normal lease, uh, but it will be a triple-net. So, um, the city would receive, uh, in this, in NVCOG's case, $12 per square foot for the space that they're leasing down their floor, and then, uh, they would be directly responsible for, uh, their utility costs and proportioned account charges, uh, that's allocated amongst all the floors on the building.
Would that go along to the rest of the possible tenants as well? So that way they're responsible for proportions on the triple-net lease?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I had one more question, but I forgot.
Further questions? Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you again. Do we have any letters of intent from any other renters? Besides NVCOG?
Uh, no, we do not. Uh, we have, uh, what is, is there or what is, uh, known at this point in time, again, is the NVCOG lease that's been proposed. Um, and, uh, Waterbury Probate Court, uh, will be relocated. Um, and, uh, the third ten, third-floor tenant, again, is on a month-to-month basis, um, but i- as I commented, you know, the expectation, if we're able to move forward with the completion of the renovation work, um, we would be working to secure third-floor tenant under a longer-term lease. Um, there is, uh, one other entity that we've been in negotiations with for quite some time, um, and at this point, um, uh, we're, there's not a letter of intent in place with that one.
Thank you. And does the probate court need to move? What's going, why are they considering moving?
Um, well, the, the city bears the cost of, uh, renting the space, uh, for the, the, the probate court. That, that's the, the city's responsibility. And, um, there are, there are issues, um, with the space that they're renting, um, and this is an opportunity to, uh, both upgrade their space as well as, um, uh, provide for the opportunity where the city would, uh, benefit from the cost savings for the period of time that we own the building.
And what are, are the issues like health risk issues or is there flooding or?
Uh, it's just, you know, uh, general tenant issues.
Like dated?
Payback and, and some dated items, yes.
Okay. And then NVCOG now resides in the same building as the Chamber on Bank Street, right? So they still have a home? Is that correct? With the WDC, I think they're on the second floor? No? No? I'm getting a no, so. Like, do they have a home right now?
Sorry, Alderman, if I can answer.
Sure, thank you.
Jim Nardozzi, Waterbury Development Corp. Uh, NVCOG is on the, uh, top floor, Levinworth Street.
Okay.
They're, they're on the third, and the probate court's on the first.
Okay, thank you. All right, so no one's homeless, that's good. Now, what is the cost of the property to sell right now? If we were just put it on the market and find a swing space?
To sell One Exchange in its current condition?
Yes.
You're saying, um, I don't know.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jane?
Sorry, thank you for recognizing me again. Sorry, I remembered my last question. Speaking of the leases, um, it's total six floors, seven floors? I'm sorry.
Six floors.
Six floors. If we were to occupy, say, the top two, you know, in the way the real estate market works here in this region, um, lower floors are, you can get more for them per square foot. Would that be a true statement if we were to do something like that with One Exchange place? We could rent possibly the first couple of floors versus the city taking them at a higher per squa, per square foot dollar than, say, if we rented out floors three to six?
I'm not sure on that. I, I will say above the, the first floor, uh, the, the rest of the floors are pretty, pretty similar in nature. What certainly the first floor offers is, uh, the direct on-street access, um, that, uh, the other floors, you know, don't have the benefit of.
Which kind of is my question, like, could we get possibly more for that, renting that out and say our city employees go into a higher floor? I mean, is that a, that someone entertain that possibility?
Uh, I will, you know, certainly, you know, when, uh, NVCOG, uh, uh, visited the space, uh, within the building, uh, it was their, uh, direct desire to secure the sixth floor.
The sixth floor?
Yeah.
Further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Okay. Standby for a roll call. I apologize, our, uh, city clerk stepped out. Standby.
Alderman Alson?
No.
Alderman Mary Grace Cavalo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sandra Martinez McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Moseley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Alderman Michael Savio?
Yes.
Alderman Talja Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Belinda Weaver?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly Zimmerman?
No.
Alderman Michael Digi Van Carlo?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
How many nos?
Two no.
Okay. The ayes have it. Uh, the item, unfinished business item number five is approved. Uh, with that, we're, uh, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to return to the regular order of business?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it, we're returned to the regular order of business. Um, we will recess into committees and we'll start with finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order. Item number two, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a refund for Harp Home Services, 863 Marshall Phelps Drive, Windsor, Connecticut, 06095, in the amount of $517.50. For permit, PR 2025 001007, 36 Reed Street, Trinity Solar, 7 Meckey Place, Cheshire, Connecticut, 061, uh, 410, in the amount of $1,170. For permit, PR 2025 0000749, 16 Warner Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. Momentum Solar, 80 Clark Drive, Unit A-1, East Berlin, CT 06023, in the amount of $6,210. For per, permit, PR 2024-4186247 Wood Street. PR 2024-4321247 Wood Street. PR 2025-013649 Arnold Street. PR 2024-4863174 Rodney Street. And PR 2025-0035174 Rodney Street. Permits canceled, no work done as submitted by Frank Baker, acting building official. They have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the refunds is read.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer general fund, FY '25, in the amount of $465,000, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, manager of budget- R. Gary, manager of budget development and oversight. They have a motion?
Motion to approve the transfer is read.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. For your standing committee, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve director of finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $5,319.92, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refunds.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
I'll call to order the intergovernmental committee meeting. Thank you. No, you're good. And we are starting with item number one. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen not disapprove the following appointment to the Good Jobs Liaison, as, uh, as submitted by Michael Digi Van Carlo, President, Board of Aldermen, Anthony Miranda, as the contractor representative. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we not disapprove.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number four, your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract under RFP number 8340 between the City of Waterbury and Safety Marking LLC for 2025 pavement markings in the amount of $200,000, as submitted by Roy Kavanaugh, city engineer. Can I get a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Roy Kavanaugh, city engineer.
I just have a quick question. Is this the new paint that you were speaking about that lasts longer for the markings on the street?
Yeah, the basic contract is for epoxy paint. We do have an option for latex, um, under the contingency item for short-term, uh, projects and requests. So basically, yes, the permanent installations are the epoxy, only the lasting paint.
Okay, and do we have a list of the streets that you're marking, or can we receive one?
Yes, we do. It's available at the mayor's office.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number four? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number six, your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a project authorization letter for the North End Recreation Roof Replacement Project in the amount of $450,000 for the design-build services and $8,000 for construction administrative services, as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction at the Waterbury Development Corporation. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Honorable members of Board of Aldermen, President, Ron Casella of WDC.
How are you? Thanks for coming tonight.
Good, thank you.
I just have a quick question concerning these, actually, these two roof projects that are on our agenda. With the timing, knowing that we kind of need roofs, why weren't these covered under, like, our ARPA funding and our different infrastructure funding that we received through COVID times? Was there a reason?
That I don't know. I know the funding source now, Ms. Lotz.
Good evening, Sarah Gary, manager of budget development and oversight. Um, these two roof projects tonight, the North End Recreation Center and Washington Park House Roof Replacements, were both budgeted in the current year capital plan, and they'll be funded by our LOSA grant from the state of Connecticut. So we did receive, um, over a little over $75 million in ARPA funds several years ago. Um, we did do a number of projects that actually related to parks, um, particularly the pools. Um, so these ones, um, they're just, $75 million is a lot, but there are a number of priorities, um, and there just wasn't enough to do these roof projects within ARPA, so we budgeted them as LOSA projects.
Alright, thank you both. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number six? I, I just have a follow-up question, I think, Sarah, probably to you. Are there any matching funds required for these roof replacement projects?
I didn't hear that. What was that?
Over here. This side.
No, there's no matching funds required for a LOSA-funded project.
So they both come out of the, the state grant entirely?
Correct.
Super. Thank you so much. Any further discussion on item number six? Thank you. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number seven, your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a project authorization letter for the Washington Park House Replacement Project in the amount of $250,000 for the design-build services and $8,000 for construction administrative services, as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction at Waterbury Development Corporation. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on item number seven? Thank you. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight, your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve Amendment Two to the Professional Services Agreement at 835 South Main Street between the City of Waterbury, the Waterbury Development Corporation, and tie and bond. Amendment Number Two would extend the contract time for professional environmental services to December 31st, 2025, and increase the contract amount by $96,639, increasing the not-to-exceed amount to $381,186, as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction at WDC. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an application for a grant from the Community Investment Fund 2030 Round Seven, Phase Three Downtown Streetscape and Utility Improvement Project, West Main Street, in the amount of $4 million. There is no cost share requirement for this funding source, as submitted by James Nardozzi, Executive Director, Waterbury Development Corporation. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 10, your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the project authorization letter for the West Main Street Utility Improvement Project. The cost of the project will be approximately $18 million, and the city has secured $4 million to date in DECD, Capital Improvement Fund Grants, as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction, Waterbury Development Corporation. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Thanks for recognizing me. Hello. I just, I guess I have a hard time approving part of a project. I feel like we're asking for, what are we asking? Like, what, the money that we're asking for, what is that going to cover?
Well, it's going to cover many things down here. I'll go over the list of it. Uh, we have a, uh, first of all, replacing water mains.
Right.
Uh, storm sewer, uh, storm system, the water main, transmission line, and also box culverts. Um, the water main is, they're in need of repair. Same with the storm and the sewer. Uh, these systems were in place in the 1891s to the 1904. Uh, they're in dire need of repair. Uh, we want to make sure all the infrastructure before we do any site improvement work, that the, um, all the utilities are repaired and in place. Uh, so this one here, it's, it's done. And then when we have to do the streetscape and new paving and curbs and sidewalks, we don't have issues afterwards that we have to dig it up to replace over 100 years of utility undergrounds.
Okay. So right now, we are, we're approving the $18 million as a whole, the whole project, with the $4 million of CIF grants?
Good evening. Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Um, all that's being asked of you this evening is to approve a project authorization letter that would authorize WDC to, um, move forward with the development of the project and project management, um, if the project ultimately goes to full fruition. Um, you're not being asked to commit any funds at this point in time. The estimates that, uh, Ron Casella has put together is an overall estimated project cost of 18 million. We've secured 4 million from the state of Connecticut. Um, the application, uh, the prior item is, uh, an application to secure an additional $4 million for this project. Um, and in order to move forward, though, with the project, we would be back before this board to ask for authorization for funding for the project before it could move forward.
Right. And then we have another item that's just like this afterwards on the agenda. So here we are, we're going to say, we're going to approve it, see, I mean, because we want to see progress in the city, right? But then how can you not commit now as a board if we tell you to move forward with all this planning and all the, all of the sourcing of this project, and then all of a sudden, we need $18 million, or 10, or 12, or 16? Um, do we have a timeline for this? Like, should we take one at a time instead of both of these at the same time while we're doing downtown and the Greenway and West Main Street and?
So the, the issue with this project is, um, the, the, the next thing to come is, uh, the complete streetscape of West Main Street from the green out towards Route Eight, approximately 4,400 square feet. Um, the city, a couple of years back, had secured a raised grant, uh, from the federal government, a federal grant, um, I believe for the streetscape portion to the tune of, uh, nine or 10 million dollars. Um, and, um, we would need to move forward efficiently with the underground utility work, um, in order to stay in front of the timelines for which the streetscape work would have to be completed. Um, so, um, the, the timeline is, would be relatively aggressive from the standpoint that, um, if we were to move forward, it won't be that long before we're before this board asking for, uh, a, a project funding commitment, um, at which time, you know, it would be presented to this board the merits of the project for your consideration.
So we don't have this money budgeted for in this year's budget, then? Is that correct?
That's correct. There is, there is not a capital appropriation. Um, we do have, within the proposed capital budget, um, a $10 million, uh, uh, capital project, uh, split between, uh, the water and the sewer enterprise funds. Uh, so that is in the, uh, the mayor's, uh, proposed capital budget for fiscal year '26.
And then what if we want to put this in next year's budget and do it next year? Will we be able to get this grant that's listed, the $4 million?
So, again, we've already secured the 4 million.
Oh, okay.
The, uh, the application for the additional 4 million will go in soon, and we're hopeful that there'll be a determination from the state, um, by the back end of the summer or early fall. Uh, so we'll, you know, know at that point in time if we've been successful in securing the additional 4 million. Um, and so that, those are the components of the overall $18 million proposed estimated project cost. It would be the, the bond authorization split between the water and sewer enterprise funds, and then we anticipate with the 8 million secured and assistance from the state.
Now, why can't we put this in next year's budget and do this next year when we have everything kind of accounted for?
It, it's really the issue of the timing. Um, there is a, a date under which the underground utility work would have to be completed, um, to stay in front of when, uh, the streetscape project is, uh, expected to be, uh, initiated. The raised grant, um, has a, a deadline, a future deadline, a few years out where the work needs to be completed, all work. Um, so it, it's, you know, put this work into a compressed, a very compressed timeline as far as, uh, moving forward. Um, the basis, again, behind it is, you know, we, we've done this on, uh, East Main Street, we've done this on Freight Street, we've done this on Bank North and South. If, if there's funding secured, and in all those cases, it had been for the complete streetscape, we just, it, it's been the, the position of the, the city, the administration to, you know, address the underground utilities. A lot of these utilities are, uh, 100 to 120 years old. Um, and, um, you know, it's just a, a prerogative where if we have the ability to make the improvements that will secure these lines for 100 years into the future, it takes off the table, you know, a, a year after the streetscape is completed that we've got a, a water main break or a collapsed sewer line.
Yeah, agreed. Alright, so the $4 million is going to go into the infrastructure right now, like the pipe, the water pipes, et cetera. Well, we're going to approve, if we approve this, then the $4 million is the first thing we use to work on the infrastructure, and then we look at the project?
Again, all you're approving this evening is a, a project authorization to allow WDC to move forward with management of the project. Or, over the, the weeks ahead, there'll be, um, the development of the ask that would be brought before this Board of Aldermen for a commitment of funding for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 10? Thank you. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11, your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the project authorization letter for the Washington Ave Realignment Project. The cost of the project will be approximately $9 million, and the city has secured $2.8 million in DECD funds, of which $543,000 was expended for the realignment design, as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction at the Waterbury Development Corporation. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I just, I'm sorry, you can call on me. I'm sorry.
Alderman Zimmerman.
I just think half a million dollars is a lot of money for an engineering design work. Is that, that's our normal, what does that entail?
It went out to bid, and they were the low bidder. Uh, but the involvement of it is designing of the, uh, roadway intersection, taking the bridge, um, infrastructure, utility, site improvement work, taking the dogleg out of the bridge for the safety of the trucks parking, and changing the, um, Washington Avenue roadway. So, right now, that, um, we're trying to take the dogleg out of the bridge because there's many issues there when trucks are trying to turn on there and trying to make the right or left turn on, on, on South Main Street.
Sure. Uh, what is the condition of the bridge?
The bridge is in good shape. It has been, uh, checked, uh, last two years from DOT. So the bridge is, is in good shape. Uh, we're going past the bridge and before the bridge for new pavements, curbs, sidewalks, and relocating, uh, utility poles. Um, the traffic way will be much better, uh, being accessed to making turns, especially with, uh, large 54-foot trucks entering and exiting the site. So I think it's going to be, also help us for safety, and also for cars and traffic.
Is a 54-foot a tractor trailer? I don't know.
Yes, plus the cab, it's 72 feet.
So they're not coming from the highway end, right? Because they can't fit under the bridge?
Correct.
So then they turn in the other way?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a follow-up question. This was the, we had a public, a public meeting around this realignment project.
this realignment project, correct?
Mm-hmm.
A couple, like a month or so?
Yes.
And what I, I attended that with a few people. One of the elements of that, that I want to make sure is covered in this, is the improvements to pedestrian safety. Is that under this project authorization letter as well?
Absolutely.
Because there was a, you had a billboard, or a sort of a poster, that showed accidents in, in the area. How much of the, going forward, how much of this is looking at those particular improvements in addition to the streetscape portion?
Those were very important items. That M&amp;J did a study on traffic, which was very intense. So between what we're going to be doing with widening the road, sidewalks, bus stop, changing the configuration of the street going up the hill, we're going to take care of all the issues prior. It was one of the most important things that we were doing in the design stage. And they also, as they did, we did traffic studies also we did prior to design. We had cameras put up to see how the roads really actually worked for a month prior to getting into the weeds of what really needed to be done. So we took that very seriously with the traffic and accidents that we've known prior that this happened through there. So I think we've, we've got it covered.
Yeah. I know State Representative Geraldo Reyes has this area as a particular focal point, especially for pedestrian safety. And there was an element to this where we were improving the bus stop location as well, correct?
Yes. Bus stop, also signal, pedestrian buttons, and crosswalks.
Great, great. Thank you. I appreciate your, your information. Any further discussion on item number 11?
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have a couple of items from the Board of Ed, and I believe all items were approved at the Board of Ed's last meeting. Item number 13. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the Board of Education for a three-year period for educational services in accordance with students' individual education programs, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Those seven agreements are: Agreement 1, Agreement with the American School for the Deaf for $2,235,475; Agreement with the Area Cooperative Educational Services Corporation for $6,300,272.70; Agreement with Aspire Living and Learning, Inc., $3,866,940; Agreement with Ben Haven, Inc., $3,645,424; Agreement with Milestones Behavioral Services, Inc., $547,097; Agreement with St. Vincent's Special Needs Center, Inc., $1,545,270; and Agreement with Waterford Country School, Inc., $337,827. Can I get a motion?
May I?
Oh, hi.
I apologize. I just ask that each agreement be voted on individually, as opposed to as a, than a group?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
I have a quick follow-up question to that, Attorney Giuliani. Sorry, one, just a clerical question.
Certainly.
Does that require seven separate committee reports? I currently have one committee report with seven on it, but I can write out seven separate ones.
It probably does require separate, because they're treated as separate agreements and to be voted on separately.
Got it. All right. Can, Mr. President? Over here, me.
I didn't hear it. Say it again.
Can I, can we pause for a bit while I get these committee reports set up?
Sure, we'll stand at recess.
For playground resurfacing at Carrington Elementary School in the amount of $126,107, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. Hello, Mr. Albini, how are you?
Good evening. Nick Albini, Chief Operating Officer, Waterbury Public Schools.
What is the name of the playground that we just built at the base of Carrington High, Carrington School?
That's called the Carrington Learning Park.
And how much did we spend on that?
That was, I believe, 1.2 million.
Okay. And so this is to... Redesign the playground resurfacing at the school on top of the hill?
Correct. This is the pre-K playscape. There's a lot of growth coming from underneath that wasn't properly prepared when they built this, and it's created an uneven surface. So we're removing everything, taking all the vegetation out, putting the stone back in, putting the top back in, so that it doesn't create a tripping hazard for the little pre-K kids or the staff.
Okay. I didn't know that. So this is almost pre-K only, right?
Pre-K only, correct. There are two up on top. One is pre-K, and one is the elementary. This is the pre-K.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 14? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Okay. So we're going to go right back to the previous item, the contracts.
Back on item, back on item 13?
Back on item 13, yep.
Call it off for the record. Okay, thanks.
Yes, thank you. So, item number 13. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the Board of Education for a three-year period for educational services in accordance with the students' individual education program, the Agreement with the American School of the Deaf for $2, 235 dollars, sorry, $2,235,475, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes.
I have another clerical question, Attorney Giuliani. Do these all remain item number 13, and these are subvotes under it?
They are. So it'd be 13-1, 13-2, 13-3, and then we just cross off the ones that don't apply, but that's the same vote.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So, item number 13.2. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the Board of Education and Area Cooperative Educational Services Corporation for a three-year period for educational services in accordance with the students' individualized education program in the amount of $6,300,272.70, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Intergovernmental Committee, item number 13.3. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the Waterbury Board of Education and Aspire Living and Learning, Inc., for a three-year period for educational services in accordance with the students' individualized education program in the amount of $3,866,940, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
How are you?
Good evening. Weddy John, Director of People's Services for Waterbury Public Schools.
Thanks for coming. Can you, can you help me just understand the difference between the Aspire, I'm just realizing that after all of these, it just is the purpose of the agreement is to provide special education, including instruction with the Connecticut General State statutes, but I don't know what that means with living and learning versus the Cooperative Education Services versus, well, I know the School of the Deaf, but milestone behavior, like...
So each of these are existing contracts that we have in the city. So these are new three-year agreements. These are for special education out-of-district placements. So these are to provide special education services for students with individualized education plans. So these are actual placements for schools that are state-approved, and these are tuition-based entities that we send students to from the city of Waterbury.
Okay. How many, do you, is there a number of students with this seventh school program that we have? Do we have a total quantity?
For this particular contract currently, we have 10 students that are occurring, but this particular contract, we're able to extend if necessary.
10 students for the Aspire Living and Learning, or 10 students for all seven of these schools?
No, for this particular contract that you're voting on right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, the only one I'm assuming, Waterford Country School, is that in Waterford, Connecticut?
Yes. Do you, do you want me to wait until you're voting on that one?
No, you can, you can answer that right now. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it is, yes.
So they, these are young kids, they go back and forth each day to Waterford?
Actually, the student that we have there actually is placed by the state of Connecticut. They're a ward of the state. So we actually have to provide them an education where they are currently in foster care.
Okay, so they live in Waterford. Oh, okay. Because going back and forth to Waterford every day is a bit far.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number three?
Well, I mean, I was going to ask how many students per school, but I was waiting. So if we should just do it, like, as a group, then...
Yeah, I think that is okay.
Can we do that as a group? So for the American School of the Deaf, about how many students do we have?
We have 10 there currently.
Thank you. And then the Cooperative Education Services Corporation?
So there's actually six ACES sites total, and we have 21 students.
Okay. The Behaven Incorporated?
Seven.
Milestone Behavioral Services?
There's going to be two placed in the upcoming year.
Thank you. St. Vincent's Special Needs Center?
Four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 13.3? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 13.4. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the Board of Education and Ben Haven, Inc., for a three-year period for educational services in accordance with the students' individualized education program in the amount of $3,645,424, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 13.5. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the Board of Education and Milestone Behavioral Services, Inc., for a three-year period for educational services in accordance with students' individualized education program in the amount of $547,097, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 13.6. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the Board of Education and St. Vincent's Special Needs Center, Inc., for a three-year period for educational services in accordance with the students' individualized education program in the amount of $1,545,270, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 13.7. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with the Board of Education and Waterford Country School, Inc., for a three-year period for educational services in accordance with the students' individualized education program in the amount of $337,827, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I'm going to pass these all as one, if you can just do your best to keep them in order. Thank you. Item number 15. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement between the City of Waterbury and the YMCA for truancy services for Waterbury Public School students following the YMCA's takeover of Waterbury Youth Services in the not-to-exceed amount of $75,500, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Good evening. Janet Frenness, Chief Academic Officer, Waterbury Public Schools.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for coming. What is the difference between what we were doing with truancy and where we're going with the YMCA? Like...
There's actually no difference in the services that we contracted for. We contracted with Waterbury Youth Services for years. The Y took them over, and it's actually the same program, same service.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on item number 15? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. And we, just as a reminder, we did 14 while we were waiting to get ready for 13. So moving on to item number 16. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a contract under CRT 24-445 with Benchmark Senior Living in Waterbury, allowing certified nurse assistant students to complete clinical hours nurse assistant students to complete clinical hours for Department of Public Health CNA requirements as submitted by Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment 2 to the agreement between Waterbury Public Schools and Aspire Living and Learning, Inc., the Institute of Professional Practice, Inc., for educational services for children with disabilities as outlined in their individual education plans as submitted by Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 18. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a Say Something Anonymous Reporting System Memorandum of Understanding with the Sandy Hook Promise Foundation for a three-year period and at no cost for an anonymous online reporting tool for students as submitted by Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Good evening again. Wendy Johns, Director of People's Services.
Thanks. How do we plan on communicating and educating, what is it, the kids using this? The students or families?
So we currently have this in place. We have since 2022. We, every year, train our students in grades 6 through 12. In all Waterbury Public Schools, we're obligated to do so as part of the current memorandum of understanding. All of our schools also have Say Something posters. We also track to make sure that we're under the obligations of the current MOU. We track and make sure that we are fulfilling all of our tips that are coming through the safety hotline, and we also use Current Parent Square, which is the district's messaging system, to make sure that our parents know. It's also in our parent and student handbook that this is something that we offer to the district.
And who mans the hotline?
We have, I'm so sorry, through the current memorandum of understanding, Sandy Hook provides registered clinicians, and they are the ones that are receiving the tips. It is then provided to myself, the Director of Safety and Security, Dan Berry, and our interim Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Schwartz. We receive messages from the tip line as well as principals from all of the schools if someone is in need of care, or the liaisons, and then we, through the tip line, if Waterbury Police Department dispatch needs to be contacted, we are the ones that provide that information.
And is there a timeline, like a commitment where they will, the clinicians will forward the information in a specific period of time?
It's immediate.
Okay.
So we receive a text message immediate when a tip comes through. It's either a phone call, or you can use your, the students can use their district-provided Chromebook, or there's an app that they can use.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 18? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 19. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a concurrent enrollment agreement with the Connecticut State Community College in Arctic Valley through June 30, 2030, and at no cost for student participation in Perkins Five College Career Pathways Program as submitted by Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 20. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment 1 to the professional services agreement with the Waterbury Symphony Orchestra, Inc., to provide music mentoring services for students as submitted by Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 21. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment 1 to the agreement with Ben Bronze Academy for educational services with children with disabilities as outlined in their individual education plans as submitted by Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 22. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment 2 to the professional services agreement with Linguistica International, Inc., for phone and/or video on-demand translation services as submitted by Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 24. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman set a public hearing on June 9, 5:45 PM, in these chambers to receive public input on a lease agreement with Arctic Valley Council of Governments, One Exchange Units 6A and 6B, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing?
Motion to set, set the public hearing.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The public hearing has been set for June 9, 5:45 PM. Item number 25. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the City of Waterbury application in response to Connecticut Department of Public Health, RFA 2026-0907, implementing a public health approach to address community gun violence as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, RN MSN, NPH, Director of Public Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Okay. With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. We do have one more item on the agenda I forgot to approve the minutes, so with that, Alderman Dorso, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the Monday, May 5, 2025, 2026 Budget Department Head Meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes is read.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the minutes are approved. The following items are on the consent calendars. Item 1 is on consent to approve. Items, item 2 is on consent to approve. Item 3 is receiving place on file. Item 4 is a, on consent to approve. Item 5, receiving place on file. Item 6 is on consent to approve. Item 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11 are on consent to approve. Items 12, I will say items 13, 1, 13, 2, 13, 3, 13, 4, 13, 5, 13, 6, and 13, 7 are on consent to approve. Items number 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 are on consent to approve. Item number 24 is on consent to set a public hearing for June 9, 5:45 in these chambers. Item 25 is on consent to approve. Items number 26, 27, and 28 are receiving place on file. And unfinished business, items 4 and 5 are on consent to approve. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Second.
Any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Alderman Alsas.
Yes, I'd like to ask that number, item 6, item 7, and item 5...
No.
Be pulled from the consent calendar, please.
What, what was the third one? I apologize.
Item 5 on the...
Unfinished business, number 5?
Unfinished business, yes.
Okay. All right, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to approve the consent calendars as read? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. Sorry, Mr. President. Can you remove me from, or remove item number 12 from consent, please?
Number 5 and number 12 on the original agenda?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, okay. Items number 5. All right, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as read minus items number 5, number 6, number 7, number 12, and unfinished business, number 5?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
For discussion? Is that okay?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
For number 12, do, does this cover?
So hold on, hold on. Let's, um...
Sure.
Let's approve the consent calendar as read minus those items. When we get to 12, I'll, well, you can ask on that.
Gotcha. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so do, uh, let's do the approval one more time. Motion made, uh, is there, all in favor of approving the consent calendar as read minus number 5, number 6, number 7, number 12, and unfinished business, number 5? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved as read. With respect to item number 5, the chair would recognize, oh, excuse me, item 5 was receiving place on file.
Mm-hmm.
Who pulled item number 5? Jack, you didn't want, you want just unfinished, number 5?
Unfinished, number 5.
All right, so let's go back. I'm gonna revisit the consent calendar. Okay. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as read minus item number 6, 7, 12, and unfinished business, number 5?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, no. I, I, this proved, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved as read. Item number 6, with respect to item number 6, the chair would recognize Alderman Tajaldeen, the Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number 6. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a project authorization letter for the North End Recreation Roof Replacement Project in the amount of $450,000 for the design-build services and $8,000 for construction administrative services as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction at WDC. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Weaver, seconded by Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy. Any discussion? Alderman Alsas.
Yes, I'm, I'm questioning the exorbitant amount of money for design and build services on a building that exists. Can somebody explain to me exactly why we have to design services on this?
So the replacement of this roof...
Sorry, Ron, just again for the record, I apologize.
Honorable Board of Alderman President, Ron Casella from WDC. So we ended up going out to bid for a approximately 13,000 square feet of a building, and the roof is from 1979. It's an existing metal-built-up roof, and it, and it needs dear, dire repair. So what we did is, we had, um, we had eight bidders look at the job, and we did it as a design-build with a CA package where we would have someone watch the roof as it's getting repaired. We had very competitive bidders. We had, three guys were close, and then the other four guys were somewhat in the same But the, um, the roof was in, it's from 1979, and it's well overdue for repair. So that's why we went out to a design-build and to get this roof repaired, so we would have another roof for another 30 years.
I'm having a difficult time understanding why we have to design a roof. We're, we're replacing the roof. Is that correct?
Yes, we are, but we did a design-build, so the roofer also includes the design of it, and we have a separate CA service to watch the roof as it's being repaired, so we make sure that whatever on the drawings and the spec is being adhered to. So we just don't want someone to do a roof without someone inspecting it as he does the work on it.
I, I understand that part, and I have no problems with that $8,000. I just still can't understand why we have to spend $450,000 when we hire a roofing company to replace a roof that exists.
And I, I...
We have to, we have to design a new roof? What, what is the problem with this roof that it has to be $450,000 of new design?
It's not just the design, it's the, it's the workmanship of installing the roof. The design is, the design is minuscule. We broke the design out. It's the repair of the roof, removing all the ballast roof, including new insulation, new membrane, all new flashing and copings.
So the $450,000 is including the new roof? It's not just the design?
Yes, it's, it's, it's the roof...
That's the whole job?
Correct.
That's start to finish, we got a new roof?
Correct.
Nothing else to it? Okay, 'cause the way I read it, it was design and build services, and it was like...
No, no.
Nobody in this world is worth $450,000 to draw a picture when you can do it with a camera.
We're removing the roof and installing new and making all the existing repairs to the roof.
Okay, let's save a few minutes then, and we'll look at number 7 and say the same thing. The $250,000 for the design-build services?
Let's wait to, to...
Or, eh, just...
To get on numbers, yeah, let's wait to get on number 7.
Okay.
Yeah.
No problem. So, so the whole job is gonna cost us $458,000 to replace that roof?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
I do just wanna say, Ron, on the first page?
Yes.
Just to be clear, this project involves design-build services, including the development of the roof design and the full construction and installation in accordance with that design.
Correct.
Sum it up right there on the first page?
Absolutely, and that's for, and that's for both roofs.
Okay, thank you very much. Further discussion? Hearing none, let's, uh, do a roll call.
Thank you.
Ron, just stand by, please, 'cause case, there's questions for seven.
Alderman Alsuff?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Nujain?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Alderman Taladine?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Weaver?
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo?
Yes.
You got fourteen yes.
Okay. Uh, the ayes have it, and item number six is approved. With respect to item number seven, the chair would recognize Alderman Tajaldeen, the chair of the Intergovernmental Committee.
Item number seven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommend, respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a project authorization letter for the Washington Park House Replacement Project in the amount of $250,000 for the design-build services and $8,000 for construction administrative services as submitted by Ronald Casella, Vice President of Operations and Construction, WDC. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Weaver, seconded by Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, discussion. Alderman Alsuff?
I had the same question on this one. When, when I'm looking at the wording of this, "design-build services," it, it's a little misleading to me when I'm reading those words. If it's "design and build," that makes a big difference over designing, building services, build services, to me. If you understand where I'm coming from...
I, I do.
My confusion, then. Okay, so, in the future, simplify it for me?
I will.
Much easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, uh, a roll call?
Sure. Alderman Alsuff?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Nujain?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Alderman Taladine?
Yes.
Alderman Weaver?
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, approved.
Okay, ayes have it. Item seven is approved. With respect to item number twelve, the chair would recognize Alderman Salvio, uh, the chair of the Finance Committee. Alderman Salvio?
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a budget transfer, General Fund FY25, in the amount of $465,000 as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Uh, discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you for recognizing me. I'm always in a battle about Eversource because of my constituents, so, um, I think the question here is, um, there's an increase of $465,000 due to the increase in public benefits charge that's happening with Eversource. And my question is, so, this is the Department of Public Works, Public Buildings, Streets, does this give us a whole picture of what, like, I'd like to see, here are my two requests. What does Waterbury look like as a whole with this increase in public benefit charges? And then my other request is that we, as a city, if not, I'll have to do it as an alderman, but I'd really like to see us as a city, write to our state representatives to advocate us, for us, with these public benefits charges, and make our representatives aware of the increase that our city's seeing.
Sure. Sarah Gary, Manager of Budget Development and Oversight. The transfer is in the total amount of $465,000. It's coming from our contingency account. $55,000 would be transferred to the electricity account, um, in the Bureau of Parks under DPW. $350,000 would go to the Bureau of Public Buildings, and $60,000 would go to the street lighting account, which falls in, um, Bureau of Streets. There are other electricity accounts in, um, different bureaus and different departments throughout the city that had some shortfalls, but other accounts within their budgets will likely be able to take care of the overage, but these bureaus looked like at this point that they needed a significant, um, budget transfer, so that's why we're coming before you to transfer from the contingency account. Um, just, for example, the electricity account in Parks is pretty much, it's fully spent at this point, and that's with two more months left of bills to pay. The public buildings electric account, um, is all spent so far, and that's with four more months of bills to post. And the street lighting account, um, right now, we're at about $438,000 of the $500,000 budget, but that was with three more months to post. So based on projections, the, these are the amounts that we feel the accounts will need to cover bills through the end of the fiscal year. Um, but there are other areas throughout the city that have, um, experienced these increased bills, uh, and just another example is, within the Education Department, they have a $3 million electricity, um, budget, and I know they've already transferred $200,000 into the account, and they'll likely need to transfer about $500,000 to $600,000 more, so they're anticipating about $3.7 to $3.8 million, um, in total costs for the fiscal year in the electric account. Um, it is largely due to the increase in the public benefits charge, the rate that took effect on July one. Um, if, if you need a further analysis from the bills, the Finance Department may be able to provide that information about specific accounts and what the public benefits charge is on those accounts.
I, Mr. President, I might put this to you as the head of our board. I guess my question to the city or the administration would be, are we opposed to calculating up our increase in cost and sending it to our state representatives, asking them to advocate for us when it comes to any more increases with Eversource?
So, uh, not just the City of Waterbury, I would say every resident in the City of Waterbury has...
Sure.
Pretty much let their state representative know that they're not happy with the electric bills. Yeah, so it, it is concerning. Um, we will bring the number up to, to the state, let them know the situation the city's in because of these unforeseen, uh, rises. Um, again, there's about, I think, forty items on that, in that group with the public benefit, so we are trying to eliminate some. Some are twenty-year contracts, so some will not be eliminated, but there is work being done to try to remedy some of the issues that were, have been there for years, by the way, so it's something that we're trying to, uh, there's not much to chop off, but what we can, we will get rid of, so...
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those, uh, let's do a roll call?
Yep.
Alderman Alsuff?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Nujain?
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Alderman Taladine?
Yes.
Alderman Weaver?
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman?
No.
No, okay. Uh, Alderman Dijo Vincarlo?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one no.
Okay, the ayes have it. Item number twelve is approved with respect to, uh, item, I'll just read unfinished business number five. Unfinished business number five, requesting, uh, approval of appropriations and bond authorization for rehabilitation, renovation, and fit out of the One Exchange Building in the amount of $6 million, uh, uh, sent in by, uh, Mike LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Alderman Alsuff?
Yes. I wanna go on record saying, I'm not against trying to make downtown Waterbury better, but we're taking on a twenty-year debt, and we're letting somebody off the hook that came in and just basically didn't do what they were supposed to do. We paid our own taxes on that building when we gave them the money for the building. It's a, it's a vicious circle we get into, and sometimes, an empty lot is not a bad thing when it's gonna cost us so much money that it takes us twenty years, or if we're very, very lucky and make some of the money back, we may be able to pay off some of the bonds. But we already know that we're going to lose money at the completion. This is not the, you know, and telling me $400,000 in swing space, that's wonderful, except that's a lost money anyways, 'cause we're, we're buying the building and we're spending all this money on it, so it's, it's not free $400,000. We're just masking it or calling it something different. So I, I just can't go along with this. I, it, it's time that the City of Waterbury either gets somebody in there that knows what real estate is, or get the hell out of the business, because we have no business buying these commercial buildings and soaking ourselves in debt to make 'em work. We're better off leaving it as an empty lot and let somebody else come along than we are taking it over so it doesn't fall down. It's very expensive to the taxpayers of the City of Waterbury. And, you know, I would love to neglect my house for ten, twelve years and have them come over and tell me they'll buy it and then let me live there. That'd be a great thing, but we don't, we don't do that, and we shouldn't be doing it for these buildings. It's, it's, it's not a good idea, and I, I just think it's, it's irresponsible on our part long-term. We talk about, we get state grants, we get federal grants. You know, I, I can show you my checkbook. I wrote checks to the federal government, I wrote checks to the state government. I pay for this thing too. No matter who gives us back the money, it comes out of our pocket. And I just think it's wrong that we continue to take on things knowing that it's gonna be a loss. That's, I just can't go along with it. Thank you.
So, I will, oh, Alderman Cavallo?
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. This is for, um, Attorney Michael LeBlanc. I just wanna know, I understand this is a lot of money, but we're also, how long was this bond that we're still paying off for the pension fund? That we're not done until 2038? How many years have we been paying on that?
Those bonds were issued in 2009, and they were thirty-year bonds.
And we're never gonna get that back. Thank you.
So, and I will just respond to Alderman Alsuff's. I, I think would've been irresponsible of us, would've been to let that building get dilapidated, like the Odd Fellows Building, fall apart in the central business in the, the middle of, of downtown. Uh, I understand we probably will never recoup the state funding, and I understand it's tax dollars, federal dollars are tax dollars, but I will tell you this, we take and receive federal dollars for these brownfields that we clean up, state dollars for these brownfields that we clean up, millions and millions of dollars that we get that we'll never recoup. Um, millions of dollars that the state knows, sometimes in the federal government know that they're giving us, that we, they may never recoup. So I think what would've been irresponsible is letting that building fall apart. It's already in a very, pretty big disrepair. I, I do agree with you, seven million is definitely taxpayer dollars, but it's a, it's a, it's a bond from the state, it's a grant from the state, uh, in their eyes, to get the ball rolling on that place, move Waterbury into a little better spot, get that building into a spot, and we will recoup, hopefully, the $6 million, and I don't even think it's gonna be $6 million. Um, if you factor in the Chase Building, if we had to rent something since 2000, the last time we did this building, it was $400,000 a year to rent the place. I, I would assume it's about $500,000 or $600,000, though. So, you can, you can vote your way, uh, uh, but I don't call your vote irresponsible, uh, and, and I, I disagree with you on the state funds. Every city and town in the State of Connecticut receives state money that either the state knows that investment may not get back to them or may be worth it, but I would pretty much go on record and, and say every town and city has approved state money that maybe they've never recouped also, so we get, we get state grants for a lot of stuff that we don't recoup the money, so. Again, I, I just, you, you vote the way you wanna vote, and I don't disagree with your vote, I don't say you're responsible, I, I just, I think that, you know, when we vote, we vote, 'cause some of us have a different vision of, hopefully, what the city's gonna be in a few years, and I think it does start, you know, with downtown and getting downtown vibrant. It's been something, yes, Jack, that we've tried, Alderman Alsuff, excuse me, it's been something that we've been trying for about twenty years, twenty-five years, I agree with you, but maybe this is the moment that hopefully gets the ball rolling, but as far as the state money, I, I don't wanna say we're giving it away. The state money's been put to good use to hopefully put Waterbury in a better spot, so that's all I have to say. And further discussion, if you'd like to respond, 'cause I don't wanna leave you hanging. Yep, Alderman Alsuff?
Just to make a point, there's a significant difference between cleaning up a brownfield and taking over something that somebody's neglected and didn't pay taxes on. We should've been on top of this building a long time before, when they weren't paying taxes, such as we should be on top of the untaxed buildings that we have now, that we paid a million dollars for two of them, and we're on the hook for, until God knows when. This, this is what I'm talking about. We have a chance, if we were responsible to begin with. You owe us taxes, you pay them, or you give up the building. You don't wait until the building becomes so dilapidated that they're happy to shake your hand and say, "Thank you, it's yours now." That's the problem I have with this, and if we don't stop doing it, it's gonna continue. We have so many three-family, four-family, or multifamily houses around this city that are just dilapidated from out, out-of-city, out-of-state people coming in here, taking as much as they can out of it and walking away and smiling at it, saying, "It's all yours." We gotta stop, we have to stop. Yes, it might be painful for a little while, but it's not gonna be twenty years of pain. We're done with it. After you stop paying it, people will stop taking advantage of it. That's, that's my point. And again, I, I understand, I want a beautiful downtown, but at some point, we gotta stop and make people responsible for what they have. Owners and everybody else that owns things and stuff, instead of making the guy who has nothing to do with the building pay for it. That's, that's the problem I have all the time. Thank you.
Well, and to that, I'll say, uh, I would work every angle I could as mayor, as, as alderman of the city, to get as much money from the state and the federal government to, to make the city a better place, and, and I understand your opinion on, on paying it back, but I think we should take every advantage of city and state, excuse me, of state and federal dollars, I think we should always take advantage of it. It's a, it's a budget already from the City of Waterbury that relies heavily on state aid, so, any advantage, there's, here's where we'll disagree. Any advantage I can get from the state or the federal government, I will use it to Waterbury's best, uh, future, so. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, for recognition. I hear, um, my colleagues' concerns, and I just wanna reiterate a point that has been made, but I think it's important to make it again. I think our city, in any city, has a priority, um, to maintain its central business district. Um, and central business district is what, um, makes cities, especially, um, cities like Waterbury thrive, and, you know, we're not only making decisions about Waterbury now, but Waterbury for the future. Waterbury for future generations, uh, Waterbury for future businesses, and that building, One Exchange Place, has become iconic for downtown. I know it's a relatively new building in the, in the scope of the history of our city, but as far as downtown Waterbury, if you ask people what are some of the most iconic buildings or the buildings that they think of, um, especially commercial buildings, Exchange Place comes up all the time, so I, I feel we have an obligation. Um, it is an expense, right? It is an expense we have to take on, but I think it's a worthwhile expense, and it may take time to see the benefits. We may not all be here, uh, when the fruits of, of that come about, but I think that we're making a great decision, not just for now, but for the future business life of our city.
Further discussion? Alderman Zimmerman?
I guess I need to make a comment just on the, my no vote is concerning the fact that I would, I would like to see, um, we did accommodate, um, having the budget money for swing space, and I'd love to just see us try to put it on the market and see, uh, what the cost is that we can get for it, because I do like, uh, to revitalize downtown, and I would like to see the building flourish, I just, I don't agree with the way we're doing it, that's all. Thank you.
Stood. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Sure. Alderman Alsuff?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley? Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Taladine.
Yes.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
No.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo.
Yes.
12 yes, two no.
Okay, the ayes have it. Unfinished business, item number five is approved with respect to standing. The chair would recognize Alderman Salvio, the chair of the finance committee.
Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of Alderman approve the director of finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $5,319.92 as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve the refund.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it, the motion carries, and the refunds are approved. Before we go into the good of the order, I just want to throw a reminder out there, the second budget public hearing is next Tuesday, May 27th at 6:00 p.m., next Tuesday, May 27th at 6:00 p.m., and the special meeting for the budget adoption will be Monday, June 2nd at 5:30 in these chambers, so. The 27th of May, 6:00 p.m., June 2nd, 5:30 p.m. Anything for the good of the order, Alderman Elsa.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that this coming Saturday, there will be a rededication ceremony at the Stone House at Hamilton Park. The East End Community Club and the Bully Manor Neighborhood Association have teamed up and put together a program that will offer free food, a DJ, some games and stuff for the kids, several exhibitors will be there. I think it'll be a great day to come and recognize the amount of work that went into revitalizing this gem in Hamilton Park that can be utilized now. It's been electrified, has lights, it has a lot of things going for it, and the clubs, the organizations, and the city of Waterbury sponsors have decided that we want to showcase it, and Saturday will be the day. It starts at 11:00 and will go till 3:00. You can get something to eat, something to drink, and have some fun, so I welcome everybody to please come.
Thank you, Alderman Elsa. Was that redone with state or federal money, the Stone House?
No.
I said, was that done with state or federal money, the Stone House? Do we know? Okay, all right. Alderman Mosley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, for your recognition. First, I just want to say thank you to everyone for the well wishes and the recent birth of my son, and thank you for all your sentiments to our family. My wife is doing well, my son is doing well, and we're all doing well. I also want to bring up another issue, and I brought it up in the past, growing more concerned, and I know many others are, with the amount of traffic accidents in the city. I know that the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments has been doing a traffic calming study, I know that they've been working on it. I am formally asking for them to come to one of our next meetings to give a report, because I think it's very important, and as we move into the summer months, we know that these are the times for the most accidents, and I don't want to see any more traffic accidents, especially fatal traffic accidents in our city, especially things that are avoidable. I know that our city is working on some infrastructure projects to help improve the roads, but I think it is important that we hear from Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments on their traffic calming studies, so we know exactly what the steps we as a city need to take to make sure every single resident and every single driver and every single pedestrian and every single bicycler is safe in our city traveling. Thank you.
Yeah, we did reach out to Roy Kavanaugh, who was supposed to come and update us, he was waiting on a few more items, but we'll reach out to him again and get it.
Why, I'd love to hear what they have so far, even if they're not finished, just to see and hear what they have so far.
Understood. Alderman Hunter.
Thank you for recognizing me. As a board in the city of Waterbury, let's keep James McRetire, firefighter, James McMaster Jr. in prayer. He passed away Saturday morning. He was a driver of a truck, too, on East Main Street. He passed away Saturday morning.
Alderman Taladine.
Thank you. Just, you said the public hearing for the budget would be?
Our second public hearing will be the 27th of May at 6:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m.
Unfortunately, I had, just FYI, I have a work obligation that night, I won't be able to be here.
No problem. Alderman Elsa.
I was hoping to end on a positive note, but I screwed up my choreography here. I want to bring out the fact that I still have not received any information on the Sacred Heart properties, how much we get in rent, how much it costs us to keep it, how much we're spending on police and fire services. I have gotten several complaints from the neighbors about people trespassing, if you want to call it, and a lot of undesirable things happening in the area. We created a blight situation down there when we took it over. We didn't create it, we took ownership of it. It's time we did something for the people in the neighborhood, get off our butts and get that place cleaned up and gone.
Alderman, we're in the process of compiling that information for everything that's worked.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
I hope those individuals, are they notifying the police department every time they see action?
They tell me they are, but I get the same complaints you get, and sometimes you know you're the only person that's listening to them.
I'll speak to the deputy about increasing the patrol assignment.
But I appreciate that.
We have a patrol assignment.
There are a number of things going on down there that just, you know, I don't personally go sit on the corner to watch, see what happens, but, you know, I take the people's word when they say there's things going on they don't want in their neighborhood, and I believe them.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further, Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. Two things, I was actually, Alderman Mosley, concerned about speeding, and I was going to send in a request, so maybe we can make a bipartisan, if you need any sign-off or request for accidents and speeding, it is a huge, obviously, we all know this, it's a huge issue in our city. Second, Memorial Day Parade, super exciting, Sunday, well, super great, I guess it's not exciting, wrong word, would be Sunday, May 25th, we are meeting on Freed Street at noon, step off is at 1:00 p.m. It's going to go Grand Street, Bank Street, and then the reviewing stand is at the Green. You are all invited. If you have any organizations on YouTube or here that you, it's still not too late to join, so we have quite the lineup. We have six of the school bands and all sorts of organizations and veterans involved, so good things for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nujain.
Thank you for recognizing me. Would like to actually say a thank you to Alderwoman Zimmerman and Alderman Jack Elsa for inviting me for both events. I'll be bringing the ice cream truck for the city of residents to pass out free ice cream, so thank you for including me in those events.
Very nice self-promotion. Anything else for the good of the order?